I call this meeting to order. Our student with a blank salute is tied up, so please stand at the black seat.
(Inaudible) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Item B approval of the agenda. Can I get a second? I have a first and a second. All those in favor? Aye, and opposed? Please note that the meeting is recorded and livestreamed at www.crbusd.org. Members of the public are entitled to speak to any item on the agenda either immediately after the item is called by the board president or following background information provided related to the item at the board president's discretion. Each person is entitled to speak on any agenda item only once at any meeting. Although board members may seek additional information, participation in debate on any item before the board shall be limited to members of the boards. Please fill out a comment card which will be given to the board president indicating the item you wish to address. Comments are limited to three minutes per individual and 20 minutes per item. Item two, presentations. There are none tonight, so item three, communications. Please board member report. Samantha McKinley.
Hi, okay, so after a successful week of finals and a relaxing winter break, Rancho officially began the second semester on January 8th. ASB hosted a tailgate in the quad for our teachers as a reward for winning the Spirit Points contest. We held a tailgate for the juniors as well the next day. This included lots of pizza and upbeat music throughout the quad. The Students of the Month include Justin Thomas, Ben Berry, Lane Riddle, Garrett Ridley, Jacob West, Talia Guerrero, Melissa Morales, Mario Villegas, Madeline Bevan, Allison Wild, Marisol Cuevas, Ashley Hinosa, Sofia Barglin, Nicole Cuevas, Patrick Mador, Bobby Rosson, Ashley Jimenez, Aiden Stider, and Mukari Russell. They were all rewarded with pizza today as well. We crew leaders have been preparing for step of the day this Thursday where they will be giving tours to our local eighth graders who are also prospective students at Rancho. Wrestling has their Cougar Crew match today. Many students in staff showed their support and spirit by wearing, by dressing up for the Blackout Spirit Day. Boys varsity soccer has an overall standing of 10 to 1 and 6 to 0 in league, and it looks like they will be going on to playoffs, and we couldn't be more proud of them. Our seniors at Rancho have successfully sent in their senior quotes, baby pictures, and signatures to yearbook, which shows how quickly our school year has gone by. We have our official prom date set for May 5th, and our upperclassmen are already excited for it. Our associate student body is preparing for our highly acclaimed unity week that is coming up in February. Last but most certainly not least, Rancho, along with Tech High, is one of 440 schools in the nation to receive the award of being on the AP District Honor Roll. This means we have done exceedingly well in expanding opportunity and improving performance for advanced placement students. Thank you. Thank you.
Item B, Roner Park Katati Educators Association Report. President Jen Bogovich.
President, we may want to mention Calvin Jenkins has a Tech High basketball team game tonight at 5:30 and is unable to attend. I only know this as my son is working.
Good evening. Is this on phobia? Hello. Good evening, President Farrell, Superintendent Haley, and distinguished members of the board. For those who don't know, I'm Jen Bogovich, President of Rixia, Roner Park Katati Educators Association. Happy New Year, and thank you for the work you do for Katati Roner Park. We hope you had a nice holiday and were able to get some much deserved rest. For many, January brings forth new resolutions. For those who do make resolutions, I've recently found out some people don't even make them, new goals and even new outlooks. Along with those important reflections of a fresh start, this month also brings forth, for educators, enthusiasm of upcoming projects and content areas that are taught during this time period. Am I right? We get excited, I know, it's fun. So one of those content areas surrounds Dr. Martha King Jr. Yesterday was his actual birthday, with a holiday to recognize and celebrate the achievements of this peacemaker. A couple factoids about Dr. King and his receiving the Nobel Peace Prize. One, he received it in 1964 at the age of 35, where at the time he was the youngest recipient to receive the, to receive the award. And number two, the reason he received it was for his nonviolent resistance to racial prejudice. So our world is a better place because of his courageous actions. Now, as we look forward on the calendar, Rixia goes back for the second session of mediation with the district one week from today, January 23rd. A big topic aside from wages is the discussion of the special education article, Article 18. In regards to wages, I shared last fall the board's desires of members. We value the board's efforts to come back to the table last, last July with 2.5%. Yet the need and desire voiced by membership is for the rates to be on the salary schedule rather than a structure of workdays and a bonus. We do value how the board has provided, 7% over the last four years. Thank you. And we look forward to continued support. Rixia doesn't have a built-in COLA, which is the cost of living adjustment. It doesn't, it's not built into our salary schedule, and so last, and last year's COLA was 3%. So we're always looking to find that support from the board. In regards to negotiating the special ed article, this is where I'll be focusing much of my report tonight. The district's implementation of the special ed model has changed over the course of the last five years. I think we can agree that some implementations could have been done more efficiently, but that's in the past and we're right now. And next week's negotiations are right now, well, a little bit in the future, and can set the stage of moving forward to support our special education staff. The staff who delivers these services, we've heard their voices, and it's in our proposal. How do we have their voices? Well, I'll share with you. Last winter, our leadership team of Matt Transby, myself, Yvonne Cobert, Jessica Gillarin, Bob Ruiz, and Carly Park, we each arranged meetings with specific departments of special ed. We spoke to speech and language pathologists, psychologists, education specialists, and special ed classroom teachers, also known as education specialists. We received insight and input as to what would make their working conditions reasonable with the new model to best meet the needs of their students. And the data is in our proposal. We realize our contract language is indeed 30 years old and does need to be updated. So ed code can help set groundwork for the contract, but our contract can and should have layers on top of ed code that best serve the educators and the students. Our leadership heard these voices last year, and just last month, more meetings began with the district. We want to express our gratitude and thanks to Dr. Senyard, thank you, Dr. Senyard, who has been organizing this process. These meetings started after the sudden resigning of the special ed director, but they are an opportunity to reassess our program. We appreciate hearing these meetings are being held and have expressed to membership and the district that this is an opportunity for staff to share the goods and the bads, all to ultimately improve the program. Now, now that Dr. Kaufman is our interim special ed director, I'm not sure she's here. Oh, there she is, welcome back, Dr. Kaufman. She too, I imagine, will be involved in the meeting. So now is always the time, now is always the time for improvement. It is notable to turn over in this department, both staffing and district level. Aside from special ed directors, last month two elementary ed specialists resigned due to the difficulty with our model and lack of support in the department. There are areas to improve, and we can work on those areas together. Negotiations is a beautiful instrument to work on them together. We ask the district, please hear and validate our input in the special ed, in the special ed article. We ask the board, please direct the district to hear and validate our input. The people who are doing these services, their voices are in our proposal, where we hope to reach an agreement with contributions from both parties. We appreciate the board for hearing us this evening, and we strive to be that destination district for students and staff. And to conclude with a quote from the one and only Dr. King, "We may have all come on different ships, but we're in the same boat now." Thank you for listening.
Item C, receives official correspondence. We have none this month. Item four, consent agenda. Benedict Condon.
Good evening, board members. I am Benedict Condon. I live at 4313 Grace Quarter at Roner Park, and I'm here to talk about concerns about Code to the Future. And this past summer, I'll give a little bit of background, I was asked and agreed to be on a panel to review the implementation of Code to the Future, which is coding for students. And I was really excited at the time, and I was representing John Reed along with Kathy C. Strand and our administrators. I did a little bit of background check on my own, attended a conference call that we had here, and there was a rep, a couple of reps from Code to the Future and a principal from one of the schools implementing it in South Bay. And we had a lot of questions. We had questions about training, curriculum, platforms, costs, and none of them were effectively answered. The broad answer to our questions was it depends on which program you contract for. And when pressed, and we did press for examples of curriculum, one of the site reps, he said it was proprietary reasons that he couldn't go into it because it's a burgeoning industry, and so it kind of didn't go any further. We were invited down to South Bay to visit the school that was implementing the program, but dates kept getting pushed back until that option was gone. And then the visitation was switched to the school that Dr. Haley went to down in Southern California, and they've been using the program for a couple of years, and they are a full district type that's going from kindergarten through high school, their program. They have it for after-school program, they have Saturday program, they have a Sunday program, which is far beyond anything that we're concerned, or conceived doing. And the reason why the South Bay school was so attracted to us was because it was a new school, we could see the hiccups that they were having as it was being implemented, and then that was kind of taken off the table. Our concerns at John Reed are how is it going to affect us with our new math adoption for the other curriculum that we're, programs that we already have in place? And then back to my brief research of Code to the Future, when I would go look it up on the internet, basically it was like infomercials everywhere. Even some of the schools that I went to, they had very cursory, generic outlines. Berenka, where's where Dr. Haley went, had the most comprehensive information, but it still sounded like infomercial. I was kind of taken aback that I couldn't get more from it. Earlier in the summer, I had found one school, it was a charter school in Maryland that had some poor experiences with it, and that's no longer found. So I don't know what happened to that, it got sucked into cyberspace. I was excited at first to find out about this program and be part of it, but then I had become disappointed because it'd been pushed on us so hard with so many questions yet to be answered. Dr. Senyard has some of my questions that I gave. Some of our teachers are concerned about the amount of time spent on technology and how that affects young developing minds. There's research saying that's not such a good idea. Some are concerned about costs and how long this is going to last, and how much it's going to cost, and how many people it will serve. And we're still not clear as to the why. Is this, are we implementing this for jobs to the future? Because right now, computers are writing code. Computer in Google just taught a robot how to walk and overcome obstacles, either overcome them or go around them. Carnegie Mellon, huge in technology, doing the same thing. And so the start of Code to the Future was a great thing, talking about a million jobs, but those things are going to be sucked up in the next couple of years, and after that, computers are going to be doing it. If it comes to the, about problem solving, kids can do that on the playground, interacting with each other. The addressing of second language students, it is effective, but they're not interacting, and so they're not developing their language skills, they're just, you know, putting blocks in. Lego is programming. You're using blocks, you'll have a picture, you don't have to read anything, and you can build a model, but it's that interaction with human beings. So I'm asking that the consent item be taken and voted on separately. Thank you very much.
Item four, consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Are there any questions?
Yeah, so just heard some concerns about Code to the Future. And we're going to spend one time, I didn't see them support it. I don't know enough about the program.
Yes.
Dr. Haley has spoken to the lead. Is it too late to discuss it some more and find out, you know, pros and cons and why we're doing it?
We can certainly have more discussions, I have all due respect to Mr. Condon's remarks, I don't think they were entirely accurate. If you would like to meet with the principal and some of the teachers involved at the school sites, I'd be happy to make that arrangements. Some of the comments regarding Rock Elementary are accurate in regards to how long they've been doing it. Anyone who wants to go to Allen Rock is certainly entitled to do that. I think the conference call went very well, but if anybody wants to take the day off and make the drive down there and check it out, that's fine too. So if you'd like, I can set that meeting up for you.
Yeah.
That'd be great. I'll speak with the principal who's here with us tonight, we'll make that happen as soon as possible. With regards to the contract, it has a fairly favorable out clause for the district, so it's not like we have to stay in the program for a while.
Okay, so I have a first and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Or she carries? Item five, educational services. There is nothing for this item tonight, so item six, personal action report. Oh, I'm sorry. Item six, personal services. Can I get a ratification of personal action report 1718-6A certificate?
Sub move.
Can I get a second? A second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Item B, ratification of personal action report 1718-6B classified. Can I get a motion to approve? Sub move. Can I get a second?
One second.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Questions?
Oh, questions?
So we, just to be clear, I've asked that we, when we, when somebody's going to retire and there's additional bring for that, that we dispose that in employment. So in this agenda, Ann Barrett plans on retiring in June and has requested for medical coverage expenses until six months or so?
Eight months.
Eight months, okay.
So she's not a girl.
Right. So I just want to make sure that, that when we do that, we offer to one employee that it's, it's part of our process. And the other employees can ask for it, and we can either ask for it or deny it. Correct, and we've done that in the past. Right.
Okay, I have a first and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Item seven, business and operations services. There are no public comment requests for this item. Item A, Resolution 1718-6 regarding annual and five-year accounting of developer fees for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2017 in the Capital Facilities Fund.
I move we adopt Resolution 1718-6 regarding annual and five-year accounting of developer fees for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2017 in the Capital Facilities Fund.
Can I get a second?
One second.
All right, I have a first and a second. Are there any questions?
I have questions. In the five-year report, the fees collected, page 21, shows presidential 1,250 and commercial 5,800, and then interest on. So was that during the calendar year 1617?
It's for the 2016-17 fiscal year, ending June 30th.
Okay, and of that, we plan, or we spent 1,200,000 in that same period, correct?
Yes.
So being like Governor Brown, and wanting to save for a rainy day, we spent most of what we brought in, and all the deposits and stuff, but I would just like to see us make sure that we, in prior years, we, the developer fees would pay for roofs and improvements to buildings and stuff.
Actually, developer fees, the requirements are different than other facility dollars. Generally, it's program expansion or the ability to house more students. And there is some, you do have to spend the dollars within a certain period of time as well. What's that period? I don't know.
Well, that's why the five-year plan is required to be part of disclosure. Technically, you only have to do that plan every five years, but it's important to show that you have a reason that you are collecting the money, that you have projects in mind. Otherwise, you potentially have to refund them to the developer. So this is not a funding source, but we can really use like a savings account for contingencies. It is for specific projects.
And it's not intended for, for major maintenance, other than if it's to open up student housing. For instance, we had Richard Crane close, or we had University Elementary close, we could use developer fee dollars to do major maintenance there to be over.
Do we know what our forecast is of revenue for the upcoming year, or is that basically going to be similar to this for 1718? We've probably already gotten six months of revenue.
Partly it depends on how quickly the university district moves forward and will apply those two bigots starts almost like.
For so far this fiscal year, including money that's not yet gone to the county office, we've collected roughly $750,000. So it could be, assuming that the state allocation board asks to increase the maximum later this month, and that we then take steps to increase our rates, that may induce some of the developers to pay sooner to feed the rate increase, assuming the board moves in that direction. But we budget conservatively. I don't project spending money that we don't have in hand, which is why you see the ending fund balance is just a little bit more than the beginning balance was, because I don't want to count on having money for TEGO, for example, and not have it. So, you know, we are trying to balance the fact that we need to spend the money within a reasonable time of collecting it with making sure we have enough to complete our projects.
One last question, $10,000 administrative charge paid to the general fund, was that for Josh's or Ann's?
No, it's for the employees who actually process the developer fee payments, the people come in to pay and the deposits. I suppose a little bit would be considered to be for my time preparing the report and preparing other disclosures, but the Fund 25 has no employees of its own, so it's reasonable for us to make inter-fund charges for the work we do for those ones.
Do you have any idea how many parcels that were approved for this last year? Do they break it down on separate?
They do break it down, but I didn't bring it with me. I can, I can bring that back in a future meeting.
You could calculate it as per footage by taking
I could.
The 348 and 1,200, divided by an average house size of 2,000 square feet or 2,100 and you'd close. But that's a known question.
All right, roll call. Kristi Bulchman?
Yes.
Krista Orla?
Yes.
Kristina?
Yes.
Kristen Graham?
Yes.
Kristi Farrell?
Yes.
Item A, board services. There's no public comment request for this item, so it's A, fiscal update.
So the, we did receive correspondence today, not in time to make it onto the agenda for official correspondence, but from the County Office of Education, from the Director of External Fiscal Services. They reviewed our last interim report in December and confer with our board adopted positive certification. So this will go to the board president, and we'll have it officially entered into the record in February. For 2018-19, the numbers keep getting bigger, the governor didn't come out with his last budget projection, overall fairly favorable for school districts. His intent is to fully fund a local control funding formula, had a schedule by two years, which is in general good news, but at this point in time, the gap between where we were at in full funding is pretty small, but it's good, and I think symbolically he wanted to make sure that was taken care of. That news is really was predicated on getting back to 2017 funding levels, which I believe were adjusted for COLAs.
Yes.
And last year's COLA was, I heard 3%, but the data I'm looking at says 1.56%.
No, that's this year. Last year was zero. 1617 was zero.
We all like raises, COLA raises, all kinds of raises. Raises in general are good. We need to raise more funding for schools in the state of California. The other thing that has continued Governor Brown's pattern of under-projecting revenues so that he can later come out and provide one-time funding, which has caused quite a bit of consternation at the state level, it was a big topic at Congress Station at the last content meeting I was at last week. When you have one-time dollars every year, they start to look like regular dollars, is what people are saying. With that said, he's not going to change. He's been very consistent in his second go around as the other, and so there is a projection of more one-time dollars in this budget, and again, that's a good thing. If nothing else, it can help us fill our reserves to healthy levels so that we can weather any fiscal storms that may be on the horizon. So overall, good news. If there's anything you'd like to add, Ann?
No, overall good news, and then we'll wait to see how his proposal goes through the legislature, and we'll have to probably adopt our budget before we know if we're the same budget will be, because that's how it is.
With regards to 2014, we don't really have any new news on parcel tax and non-authorization update. I don't have anything new on developments that you continue, whether or not we're standing.
I think it might be worth it to mention the bond sale did close. We received our $33.3 million on January 3rd.
And that completes the 2014. As you recall, we did the full amount, we took out the favorable environment right now in the region.
Is there, in the new legislation of the new tax act, something about bonds, reselling tax-free bonds, and you resell them, they lose their tax-free status?
It's about refunding bonds, from the stand, from our standpoint, so if, it used to be that we could refund older bonds that had higher interest rates and save the taxpayers' money. Now, I don't, I think it'll be a while before the regulations are written, but as we're reading the first analysis, it appears that we won't be able to do refunding bonds anymore. Luckily, we've refunded lots of bonds, so I don't think it won't hurt our taxpayers very much, but. very much, but there are districts that will probably be wishing they had gotten their refunding stuff.
I think you could do the refunding, they just lose their tax-free status, or something.
Well, so then, why would they buy them?
Yeah, they just couldn't buy them, right.
Right, so that means if you have to pay a higher rate to make up for them not being tax-free, then you probably don't save any money, so.
That's going to hurt some people.
Yes, particularly districts who have capital appreciation purposes, they will be very sorry they didn't, in many cases, weren't able to do anything about that.
I have five facilities update. I did have the opportunity last week to attend a meeting with our facilities director, right contracting, inspector of record, and our architect to get an update on how the Peter Academy gymnasium building is progressing. Also got an opportunity to walk through the site and give a tour, take some pictures. It's quite a project that's going on, a beehive of activity. There's, have been good communication lines between school, contractor, tech, inspector. We haven't had any safety concerns, and so that project is continuing forward on time and on budget. If you would like an opportunity to go inside the fence and see how the work's going along, please let me know, and I can make that arrangement. We'll have to wear a safety vest and a hard hat, it's pretty diligent about that, so they don't find the body. We'll reach out to you, see if we can get that arrangement going.
Commoncypher, they're amazed that the metal that gets put down in the morning is up by night.
They never stop.
They never stop, yeah, they're just amazed at how fast that steel is going.
Nothing new this month in technology, and our enrollment report is provided to the board, page 25. Our current district enrollment at 5871.
On a good note, the ETK dropped eight.
More ETKers are aging up.
Right, they're kind of washed out, a few of them have lost. They're washed out of ETK, they have a TK. Kind of the same, with the same number we were at last month. Gain there, but a couple lost us.
Item B, audit report for year ended June 30th, 2017.
I'll let our CDO introduce the auditor.
So we have with us this evening Mr. Jeffrey Ira, partner with the firm of Shabon and Associates, and he's here with a short PowerPoint.
All right, thank you very much for having us here. It was a very good audit, and just kind of, one of the things that I think is really good to sit back and look at sometimes is, when we do a lot of audits, we find that the districts that have a really good accounting staff, and that they have a good relationship with superintendent and the board, there's lots of disclosure information, and there's good decisions made, and honestly, that's I think what we find here at this district, and it's a good combination, and that's what makes things successful. And as you know, there's all kinds of things that get thrown at you, and, you know, you plan on certain things, and there's a lot of things that are out of your control, and having that, being able to have that frank and open discussion, being able to make intelligent decisions is what really does make a successful district, and we definitely consider this a successful district. I know you have the audit report, I can cover any questions later, but I just wanted to do a recap here. Maybe not.
This happens sometimes. I'll give you this.
Okay, so just wanted to cover the stirs and purrs. Obviously, it's one of those things that actually out of your control, because they're the ones that make the assumptions, and then you have to follow them. So the net pension liabilities are increasing, and it's something that unfortunately does have to be planned for, and. And then the other area in which you are going to have to start disclosing liabilities once again, is the retired medical benefits, or other post-retirement benefits, which is based on everyone, that's just a matter of actually disclosing these, and then eventually, obviously, how to fund these as well, which is another big challenge to be, I know that you're on top of and you're paying attention to. The minimum reserve requirement, which is most important, has been met, which is 3%. And obviously, it takes a lot of work to make sure you stay at that level, so congratulations, because I know it's not easy to do. And the, I guess the recap, we probably should have started this, which I kind of did in some ways, but in unmodified opinion, no material weaknesses, no disagreements whatsoever with management, no added adjustments, and no passed-on added adjustments that we just considered immaterial. So that's obviously very successful, and congratulations to the staff, and again, we just want to just commend you for the way you're operating the district, and you did a great job. So under that, I'll just answer the question, John.
I have a question. You said the minimum reserve is 3%. What's the actual reserve?
You're at 3.1.
Sorry, any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ann. Item C, board policies and philosophy, goals, objectives, and comprehensive. Oh, can I get a motion to accept the audit report? Can I have the second? All right, first and second, all those in favor? Aye, and opposed? Now, item C, board policies and philosophy, goals, objectives, and comprehensive plan series, 000.
I move we adopt board policies and philosophy, goals, objectives, and comprehensive plan series, quadruple zero.
One second. All right, question?
I have a question. When we adopt these, I know in the past, board members have asked Superintendent Haley if there were any significant changes that we should be aware of, you know, just since I'm new to the board relatively, I just want to ask a question about the adoption of these. Would, if Superintendent Haley confirms that there are no significant changes that the board needs to be aware of, then in the future, we would not, this is a theoretical question, in the future, we would not be surprised that suddenly the policies are changed that deviate from the CSBA norm or anything, is that correct?
Are you asking me or the board? I don't, you were referring to the board, so.
I don't know, I understand your question.
So then, my general answer would be correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have one too. What? I have first and second. Okay. All those in favor? Aye, and opposed? Item D, expense reimbursement for trustee Tim Naan pursuant to the mediated agreement. Trustee Naan, you have to recuse yourself before we come on.
I recuse myself.
All right, I move that we expense, or we, I move we pay, I move we reimburse trustee Naan pursuant to the mediated agreement. One second. I have a first and a second, are there any questions? All those in favor? Aye, and opposed? Item E, acceptance of gifts and donations to the school and district. For Lawrence Jones, we have a library donation from Michelle Rasmussen in the amount of $1,500. For Technology High School, we have a monetary donation from Glenn and Irina Kramer in the amount of $150, and from Leslie and Dale Bowery in the amount of $3,500, totaling $5,150.
I move we accept gifts and donations to schools and districts in the amount of $5,150.
Second. I have a first and a second, all those in favor? Aye, and opposed? Item nine, public comment, Lori Alderman, can I say that title?
My name is Lori Alderman, and I'm, and my family has lived at Katati for 46 years. I graduated from Magic Katati in 1981, class maybe one has more fun, going through all the district schools along the way. I was appalled when I watched a video of the December 22nd special meeting. The decline of the integrity of this district is obvious. For one thing, asking the speaker to leave was against the Brown Act and your own board policies. These meetings are open meetings subject to the Brown Act. Telling the speaker that they must leave is a Brown Act violation. Your board policies state that it must be a board action which would require a vote. Having the president of the board unilaterally tell a person to leave is just plain wrong. The proper procedure would have been to give the person a warning, and then if the person did not stop disrupting, then the board could vote to have the person removed. I am also appalled at the discrimination against Mr. Non in having a special meeting for a $330 expense. It is discriminatory on its face to do so. Did any other expenses before this board, under $500, have a special meeting called? I think not. Like many others around this area, you all need to have respect for the Brown Act and the laws that govern your board. I am an occupational therapist and a disability advocate. I also found your actions to tell Mr. Non how he can be accommodated for his disability and which resources he must use to be despicable. Within reason, he should be able to be accommodated in the way that suits his disabilities best. I also know of a visually impaired young woman who is now studying and is in advocacy classes with me, she went through the, this district, she was not properly accommodated by your district, and that is why she's become a disability advocate. This, you all need to become aware of the laws, get with the times as far as disability, and follow the Book Brown Act. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. As you said, I'm Cindy Savage-Hopkin, and I'm a third grade teacher at Montavista Elementary. I have taught this district for 22 years. Over 25 years ago, I left the high-tech industry to become a teacher because I wanted to be useful. In fact, I would venture to say that most, if not all educators, are called to teach because they want to be useful and serve our communities. So each day, we enter our classrooms, we leave our personal lives at the door, and set about the business of engaging our students to acquire knowledge, build tolerance, and care about the world we live in. We understand and passionately believe that education is the road to choices, and we want our students to have the choice to be successful and fulfill their dreams. At the end of the day, we do not leave our students at the door. They follow us home in our thoughts. We go to sleep thinking of other ways we can reach that struggling child. In the morning, we refine our lessons before we leave our homes. Teaching is not an eight-to-three position. Today, we have a problem. We are struggling and worrying about funding our own lives. Will we be able to make the rent, our mortgage, put food on the table? How often will we have to say no to our own children due to the lack of funds? Leaving our worries at the classroom door has become an ever-increasing challenge. Still, we soldier on. When Common Core came along and there was no matching curriculum, we purchased and created our own to help our children achieve standards. When more and more special needs students were put in our general ed classrooms, we educated ourselves on how to best meet their needs. You have asked us to incorporate programs, technology, and assessments into our days, and we have. Tonight, we looked at you to help us continue our work of education by building knowledge, tolerance, and caring. Help us to be useful to our students, our communities, and society by funding our race. We are asking you to stand behind the district's claim. We are a team. Thank you very much.
Good evening, board trustees, Superintendent Haley, and community, my name's Larry Polde. Since I last addressed you on December 19th, we felt the necessity to withdraw, unfortunately, our son from Montavista School. Tonight, I feel that the reasons for our abrupt decision in the middle of the academic year should be conveyed to you. We are convinced that the school and this district actually failed our son. In fact, upon further research, it is apparent that this district has failed many other children over the past years in a number of ways, and is without a doubt that this questionable pattern seemed to have developed. The first reason was a lack of timely communication and inappropriate delays on the average of 30 days. No continuance of a legitimate Section 504 should take one over one academic year to complete. Remaining in Montavista would have surely wasted a full year of educational benefit to our son. We couldn't, we won't allow that to happen. The second reason was that Montavista does not have a place, a strong system to protect the safety and the security of students, and it may be at apparent district-wide. There are many examples, the final of which was an unfortunate incident where another student tackled our own son in a playground. Our son went directly to the principal's office, lo and behold, no administrator was present at that time. Now, to add, we fielded a fire, his mother was contacted by the central office administrator, who was in transit, mind you, to the campus to address the issue because no administrator was present at the time to handle the situation on-site. We immediately communicated our outrage, and the principal never saw fit to respond to us. I ask this body tonight, why are campuses allowed to function without a qualified and legitimate administrator during Class 9? This is in a clear violation of the ed code, and I believe this board must become aware of this problem to stop it. There should never, ever be a campus operating daily without a legitimate administrator available, period. Now, after observing these and many other astounding events happening within this particular school district, we asked ourselves if we ever wanted our son to continue in this apparently flawed educational system, if it were even safe to have him continue. The last draw was looking at the district's academic record and progress. We were left aghast at the year after year lower level of student performance in all areas of academic program. The nail in the coffin for us was when we took a closer look at the district's performance on the annual smarter balance assessments, as well as the look at the previous results from the old star assessment program, because we wanted to give the benefit of the doubt to the school district. I assure you're aware of your own district's academic performance record. The results and indications are clear, this is a low-performing district, with very little indicator of substantial improvement across the board. Worst of all, in over seven or more years, there's been little to no attempt to make the necessary improvements for the system's performance. Now, tell us in the community, aye as a parent, please, what does this mean for students who go through the system in preparation for, let's say, a meaningful career or college preparation? Now, as an experienced educator and school administrator, this notable lack of performance across the board has and will continue to cause a number of negative results, if not remedy. One being that the district will lose students to competing schools, and we already see evidence of that. You cannot make any mistake of that. As well as to fail to attract excellent teachers. Make no mistake, I want to make sure it's clear, this is not a teacher-initiated problem. This is a district-initiated problem. This may eventually prompt hungry charter developers even to attempt to create charter schools here to address the glaring incompetencies. This board is allowing and welcoming challenges to our precious public comprehensive system. Is this really what you want to happen? Now, you can conscript staff and even a few grateful parents to come up to review these particular issues, but the facts remain clear. A, there is no reason for this school district to perform at this low level. For the past 10 years, all of us are to blame for this. B, there is no reason why students should be prematurely exiting the schools of this district if the schools were offering a competitive program fully equipped to deliver the curriculum equitably that demonstrated results. C, there is no reason why teacher salaries should be so low compared to other districts this size in this area. It is hypocritical to state the benefits of an educational operation of those programs for, one, the list of non-provisionary, non-real exit good potential teachers is the highest in the area; two, the overall morale of the professional teachers is dismal, all the while trying to justify a standing fiscal reserve of anything between 3% and 7%? This is utter nonsense, people. Why are we not keeping good young teachers? Why is the number of non-vilics so high here in this specific district? Do we have suitable professional development offerings that assure the success to the greatest extent as it should be the goal of this board? Or is there a specific reason why tenure seems to be looked down upon by this district? D, there is no reason why direct communication should be so ineffective to the community. In professional environments where I come from, it was expected that when a stakeholder called, return calls or emails went out within 24 hours. That makes a huge impact on gaining respect and credibility, which is sorely missing, I'm afraid, in this district. Trustees, if you are in a business for yourself, your own private business, answer one question for me. How critical is rapid communication to you? E, there is no reason why special education and ELL programs should not be fully and completely funded and implemented with appropriately assigned personnel to avoid the equity problems these programs were designed to prevent. The resulting costs in the way of legal fees that are spent by this board on matters that are actually pithy and wasteful clearly demonstrates how inept and how non-compliant this organization is. It is apparent that capriciousness and arbitrariness attitudes prevail throughout this district. People, it needs to be addressed and rectified immediately. This is your responsibility, esteemed board members. In conclusion, I regret having to remove my son from our neighborhood school. I challenge the Board of Trustees to develop a strongly communicated mission that establishes the goals and objectives for schools to adopt which are now unavailable or in the script. From the mission through the goals, you must direct the superintendent to deliver. Special concern must be given to those who have special needs and who are English-language learners. I assure you, these are apparently not happening here. Denial can and will continue to result in a loss of students and community support. I would hope that we would all agree this is unnecessary. Now, I'm more than willing to discuss this matter further with any board member and acknowledge and remind you that if you had learned from Montavista School delaying faith and corrective action on behalf of our son earlier this past year, we wouldn't be here to discuss this. As professionals who have decided to make this fine community a home, we want for each and every student to enjoy the assurance of a free and appropriate educational companion of services that they deserve without delay or resistance. We trust our teachers, we support our teachers, and we trust that our requests be handled seriously with all deliberate speed. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam Dean?
I just want to briefly speak on the issue of Tim Non's aid reimbursement issue. It was brought up at the last board meeting and then subsequent to that, a special board meeting. I read the entire mediation agreement for the first time, the entire thing today, and I was frankly pretty surprised at why and how that came about, certain aspects of that mediation agreement. I also question why this is a school board function and the way the school board functions and their procedures. I don't understand why Dr. Haley was involved in school board procedures specifically to such a degree. I also was appalled to find out that $37,500 was paid to Tim Non's attorney alone to write this agreement. I don't know what was paid to the attorney for the district. I assume it was at least that much. At the rate of approximately $5,000 a year, which is what this would encompass this agreement, it would take years for Mr. Non to spend that amount of money on an aid. I have a suggestion. When I read the agreement, I realized that at the special board meeting, some of the things that were mentioned were not in that agreement. Specifically, Mr. Orloff, you mentioned that the submission was at the top end of the schedule. I didn't see something to that effect. You said that this was at the top end of the schedule, this amount that was submitted. I didn't see anything like that in the mediation agreement. I saw that it was $330 maximum per month for her very aid. There were five specific things that were mentioned that he was to fall within those parameters in his submission for reimbursement. That was, one, the service provided was to be documented. Two, to whom the money was to be paid. Three, the date the expense was incurred. Four, the amount. And five, the proof that Mr. Non paid the expense. There was a mention that Mr. Non had a friend front him money for the expense, which is no one's business. No one has a right to ask anybody where they get their money, what in their account, how it's paid, as long as they show proof that this was paid. That was the point of that. To show proof that you actually made a payment to this person. And then it says that he's supposed to submit it to Ann Baron, the district CEO, which he did. And he was supposed to submit if required at W. Non. I'm not sure if that was submitted. I didn't hear that that was required, but it wasn't at the meeting, the special meeting. There were a few other things that he was required to understand in this mediation. I didn't... It was a very one-sided mediation agreement. And then there was another thing about... It was really confusing to me about special access events. And that if he wanted to attend special access events, it was only to be arranged by the superintendent at his discretion. And that if he... Mr. Non chose to attend any such event, that he was supposed to give reasonable advance notice to the superintendent, and arrangements would be made for Mr. Non and his aide to attend. What arrangements? I don't know. I don't understand that. Then Mr. Orloff made a comment in the very beginning that I thought was really sort of interesting. He said that it was their board meeting, their board meeting. And I want to read you something that the California School Boards Association states specifically. That school boards, elected or appointed by the communities, represent the community's beliefs and values. School board meetings, whether they're special or regular meetings, or closed meetings, are for the community. You are to represent our values as tax-paying community members. I don't see that you're doing that. I see that you're representing a small handful, a group of people. We're trying to change that. We're not trying to buck the system. We're not trying to do anything to create waves. People are seeing that this organization and the way it's run doesn't quite coincide with the way it's supposed to be run. I have a suggestion. And I understand that you approve Mr. Non's submission for this last aid reimbursement. I have a suggestion that would simplify it so that there's no confusion in the future and no attorneys are required, because every time you call an attorney or have them read an email or something, it costs a lot of money. It does. And I understand that... And my suggestion is this. I understand that there was an event in November at which five, three members of the school board, along with Mindy McEwen and Rob Haley, went to San Diego for a School Boards Association meeting, and it was a three-day meeting. I assume that you had expenses. And I assume that you had to come back and submit a reimbursement of those expenses. I suggest that you provide Mr. Non with each and every one of those submissions and the detailed individual breakdown of those expenses on that trip so that he can see exactly what you're requiring of him. I think it would solve a lot of things. I really don't understand the amount of money that's spent on attorneys in this district. The amount of money that's spent with issues that it's spent on far surpasses what you're constantly fighting for. Now, as a taxpayer in this community, I really would like that to stop. And I'd like us all to figure out how to make that stop. Because it's affecting all of us. It's not only affecting our pocketbooks, but it's affecting our emotions. We could all be better friends. I don't understand why we're operating this way. We don't have to.
Thank you. Peter Casas, Snowa County Office of Education. Return.
Hi. Peter Casas, Snowa County Office of Education. Good evening. Thank you for your time. I just want to update you on some meetings that the county office may be offering trustees. But before I do that, the last time I was here was in October. And I left this meeting to go to Snowa State because of the SHIP awards that... That's the summer institute that you've always had at least two or three students participate in. And Calvin Jenkins, who's not here tonight, presented that at Snowa State. I got a chance to talk to him. He's an incredible young man, very bright. He's got a bright future in front of him. And I understand half of what he was telling me about his project. Again, it's just... It's really nice to see your district consistently have two to three students from either Technology High or Rancho participate in the summer institute. And I hope you continue that this year. So with that, I hope that you're going to have students from your high schools and your elementary schools and your middle schools. There's the STEAM showcase again that we had last year at the Luther Burbank Center. You participated in that. And it's going to be happening again on March 2nd. And elementary school students, middle school students, high school students can participate in that. And, boy, we had about 30 different schools in the county participate in that last year. It's pretty incredible watching our students talk about STEAM. And when they... I was a judge, and when I spoke to students about their project, because STEAM's about integration of science, technology, engineering, math, and art, they were able to talk about their project and how they were able to integrate all of those areas in their project. So just that higher level of learning and public speaking and really looking at their project and what it means was very impressive. So just a few announcements about workshops that are coming up, and these are all free. And all you have to do is register. So January 23rd, 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., these are all put on by School and College Legal Services. Carl Corbin puts some of them on. And Brown Act Workshop. On February 8th, I think Tracy probably know about this one, there's an education and legislative roundtable for board presidents and superintendents. We're going to have Assemblyman Mark Levine and Jim Wood and State Senator Bill Dodd attend. So it's not pretty for superintendents and board presidents to meet with our assembly and state senator to talk education issues that are coming up. Then on February 20th, from 4:00 to 7:00, maybe legal hot topics for all trustees in the county. And we're looking at transgender issues and we're talking about social media. We're going to be talking about digital responsibility, new legislation, maybe some new CSPA board policy around that and what that means for different boards, how they're going to tackle these issues, which are really complex issues. And then on March 21st, any new legislation that pertains to education, we're going to have a workshop on that to present to boards and superintendents on new legislation that's in the hopper in Sacramento. And finally, on April 12th, in the morning, we're going to be putting on a conference, so a challenges of youth conference. And we're looking to... This is a county-wide conference. We want to invite nonprofits. We want to invite trustees, superintendents. We'd like to invite principals, school counselors, assistant principals. And Tracy, I'm going to give you some of these to pass out to the board members and give to Dr. Haley too. But we're going to have a keynote speaker. His name is Christian Moore. And he... I don't know if you're familiar with Y-TRY. It's a curriculum that was developed to teach resiliency in schools. So he's going to talk about resiliency. And when he's done, we're going to have four breakout sessions. One breakout session's going to be on trauma-informed instruction. So we've all heard about ACEs, Adverse Childhood Experiences. But we're going to concentrate this one on how, what schools are doing to deal with that, what trainings are being offered in schools so people in school districts are more sensitive to trauma and how that's being addressed. We're going to have another breakout session on suicide, suicide prevention for youth. And tragically, we've had several last year, some teen suicides. And unfortunately, one of them had to do with another breakout session with cyberbullying. You know, how do we protect our children from cyberbullying? So that's another breakout session. Esther Lemus, she's a trustee for Windsor Unified School District. She's also an assistant district attorney. And this is one of her areas of expertise. She's going to talk about cyberbullying. And then finally, we're going to have a breakout session on violence prevention strategies. So I encourage you, if you have time, it's free. That's going to be April 12th, most of the morning, 8:00 to noon, 8:00 to 12:30. So thank you for your time. I hope you can make some of these.
Item 10, closed session. It's not scheduled tonight. So item 11, open session. Board member reports and future agenda items. Trustee Non?
Thank you. In December, I went to Montavista for their holiday celebration, and I was just amazed. And the students were so well behaved in the audience and filing in and out orderly and quietly. And one thing that touched me is when this one boy went by me as they were leaving the event, he stopped and he said, "Merry Christmas." And I thought, what? You know, for a young child to stop... You know, for a young child to stop and look at a stranger and say Merry Christmas, and obviously, he had recognized that I'm visually impaired because my glasses and cane, and I thought, what a wonderful child. And I think that reflects so well on the teachers and what they're doing there. And the performance was just wonderful. And listening to the laughter and the applause by all the children in the audience, they, it was so obvious they loved it. And I know one of the teachers who organized it said, I wonder why I do this every year, it's so much work, but then after I see it, I realize, you know, how valuable it is. And I just want to thank the teachers who worked on that, and it was so meaningful. It was the highlight of my holidays. And I just want to thank all the teachers in our district for all the hard work they do. Like Sammy Savage saying, they have harder not to take their jobs home and the struggles they're going through. And I think it's so important for us to recognize the work and reward that work fairly. I also want to thank Superintendent Haley for arranging for me to see the injury and illness prevention program records today. And Julie Senor was there, Karen Tedesco, and Josh Savage to answer my questions and help me send on me, who was assisting me going through 11 huge volumes. So I'm going to keep researching this because there were so many questions raised by what we found. I just want to say one thing about what we found today is that it's clear that the injury and illness prevention program, which is designed for the health and safety of the employees, is not functional. And just, you know, there are a number of things I'm going to address in the future, but Julie and Karen and Josh all said that the Labor Management Safety Committee hasn't met for several years, and you can't have an employee for health and safety plan if the committee isn't meeting. And I know some of these functions have evolved to the sites and to other safety programs with the teachers, but that doesn't, isn't meant to supplant what the law requires with the IIPP. And then I want to pass up these briefers. This is a set of two documents. The first document is from the six-page IIPP on the district website, which was put up in September of 2017. And the second page is from the board bylaws. The one question I have for Superintendent Haley is, on the district website with the IIPP, it mentions that no records are required to be kept, whether it's safety inspections, safety trainings, safety committee meetings, whatever. And Dr. Senor pointed out that she had found this legal provision to exempt us from keeping records in her review of OSHA templates and RESI data. But I have looked at a lot with my assistant, looked at a lot of IIPPs throughout the state, and they're following the same policies that we follow in our board policy, keeping records for one to three years, which is prudent, because you want to show that these things have been done in case of lawsuits or whatever. So even though that it says on our district website that records don't need to be kept, in the bylaws, you can see in the handout that it says, and I think this was passed in 2015, that we need to keep records for a year, and this is from CSBA policy templates. So Superintendent Haley, would you say that if we want to change the board bylaws to dispense with keeping records, the board needs to vote on that rather than it just being put up on the website? That's my question. Thank you.
Trustee Brown.
Good pass.
My two enjoyed going to Montavista and watching their Christmas play. Definitely puts you into the Christmas spirit, once your kids aren't so little. It definitely makes a big difference here around the little kids. Thanks to the Campbell for the invitation. It's always nice to get invited to come and see what the kids are doing. Other than that, you know, we've all been off on work, so it's a nice feel. It was.
Vacation.
All right. I too went to the Montavista performance, so thank you for that invitation. The kids did great. I'm big into youth and arts and doing theater, and so it was really cool to see your stage. I have stage envy, because both the schools my kids have gone to have not had good stages, so I want to miss the stage envy, but thank you for inviting us and all the hard work that you put into that.
Item B, superintendent's report.
Yes. Well, we did have a bit of vacation time between the December meeting and this meeting, but got some great news from Mr. Decker and Ms. Carter regarding honor band, acquired recognition for our students. So we had a record number of our students audition for honor bands acquired this year. We had seven students chosen for the Sonoma County Honor Band, and four students chosen for the Northern California Honor Band. And although two of the students are from Tech High, it's great that they work together on the band, all of them are part of the Ranch Poty High School band. Having four students make the Northern California Honor Band is not only the most we have ever had, it gives Ranch Poty High School the second-most students in Sonoma County, and we are tied for fifth in all of Northern California. So congrats to them. The students, and I will do the best that I can, who made the Northern California Honor Band, Arwan Viasenior plays the tuba, and he's a senior at Tech High. Charlie Gómez plays mallet percussion, and he is a junior at Ranch Poty. Belle Urmán Traub.
Irma Traub.
Irma Traub, who plays the clarinet, and she is a sophomore at Ranch Poty High School. And Elena Perez, the French horn, a freshman at Tech High. So congrats to all of them for making the Northern California Honor Band. And then the Sonoma County Honor Band, Juan Viasenior also made that. Ian Klosser, who plays the baritone sax, is a senior at Tech High. Lanny Alanis, the flute, who's a senior at Ranch Poty High School. Alex Brown, trumpet, is a junior at Tech High. Theo Clark, bassoon, is a junior at Tech High. Belle, as well, made the Sonoma County Honor Band, and Elena for the French horn. And then also for choir, making the Northern California Honor Choir, Jessica Sebold, who's a soprano and a sophomore at Ranch Poty High School. Melissa Matt, who's alto and a junior at Ranch Poty High School, I'm doing the best I can. Evan Crowe, who's a tenor and a junior at Ranch Poty High School. And Andrew Sedeño, who's bass and senior at Ranch Poty High School. So congrats to all of them. And in keeping with the theme, we are excited again to have our all-district music concert at Wild Hall on March 13th. I want to acknowledge Sonoma State University and the Stafford Green Music Center for making this happen every year. They do a fabulous job. They really make it. So those who've been there, like a concert that everyone is attending. I want to thank Scott Johnson, who once again will be coordinating the event, working very closely with Mindy McKeon. Don Jones has helped out, so appreciate that. Tickets will be available online beginning, I think, on February 6th, and I'm getting the nod that is accurate. You do have to get tickets, they are free, but again, keeping with how the Green Music Center puts it on, everything is as if it was a real concert, because it is a real concert indeed. This year, we are never going to have a very short intermission, or perhaps not one at all, just to get people reseated, because we are encouraging all of our students to perform, even our elementary honor band, to stay for the whole performance. I think it's important for everybody to see, this is where you can get, you can get to the Northern California Honor Band. So please be ready to join us at Wild Hall on March 13th, and we'll have a great concert. It is a school enrollment time, so we have our kindergarten fair going to take place in a couple days from now, on January 18th, from 6:00 to 7:00 at Richard Crane Elementary. It's a great opportunity to learn more about our transitional kindergarten, kindergarten programs at all of our school sites. They all meet together at one site. You can meet the elementary principals, TK kindergarten teachers, and there will be activities for children, so come on down, learn more about our TK program, maybe even say TK also. So those are the events, or those are the items that I have specifically listed. I would ask, Trustee Non, did you get the email explanation I sent you regarding the discrepancy, or as you saw, between AR 4157 and our IIPP?
Is that the one where you said, where you said you strongly advised me not to concern myself with IIPP and longer?
That's one of them, yes. And that's not exactly how I raised it. I'd be happy to just put the email out on the website.
Sure, yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. Because there's, I think, some grammar issues involved there, if you're not quite grasping.
Right.
Why don't you happen to just put it out there and everybody's reading?
Was that the same one where you said I'm guaranteeing people's careers to this?
That is, no, no, that's not what I said. You have damaged some careers, that is what I said. I didn't say anything to disrupt. But it is unfortunate when you discourage people, whether in or out. Either way.
Yeah, I'd like to see some actual documentation of that.
Hey, Rob, would you mind commenting on the press release involving the AP awards that we got, 47 districts in the nation? I know Samantha, before she left, had commented briefly, and maybe everyone's seen the press release, but for those who haven't, it might be worth talking briefly about.
I know it was a long time ago, but it was actually on the board agenda last month. We have the actual document here, and yeah, so maybe what I'll do is I'll have our high school principals come and explain how that's come about, perhaps at a future meeting, maybe next time. I'd rather give it up before and give that out.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I mean, when you're one of 47 in the country, it merits distinction.
Perhaps we could bring an AP teacher from each school. That'd be very important. So it's great.
It's a phenomenal.
All right. This meeting is adjourned.